All right, good evening and thank you for joining us for the December 3rd Board of Education Meeting. If you could join me for a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will start this evening with a report of the superintendent, Dr. Byrne.
Good evening and thank you for joining us for our December 3rd Board of Education Meeting. I can't believe it's December. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving recess. Our last board meeting was two weeks ago and we had the holiday, so I don't have a ton to report out tonight. But this week is a special week in that it is Mark's National Inclusive Schools Week. There are activities and recognitions taking place at all of our schools. There's an inclusivity sticker contest taking place at RMS and Rye High School, sponsored by the Garnet Class and the Salt Squad. Winners will be announced on Friday. There are also both classroom and community activities taking place. At the elementary schools, there are daily announcements and activities. A huge thank you to Raze for their assistance and support with the programming for this important week. Tomorrow, we will hold our first ever parent reunification drill, and it will be held at Milton School. The drill is recommended by us, to us, by our security consultants, Altara's. While it is not yet mandated by New York State, it is a drill schools around the country are increasingly holding, and it will be very informative to us if we ever have the need to reunify students because of an emergency at one of our buildings. We anticipate the drill will take two to three hours. By police and fire department, we'll be blocking off Hewlett for a few hours, and traffic will be tied up around the school, and there will also be some activity in the Playland parking lot. We thank our partners at the Rye Police and Fire Departments for their support as we work together to keep our community safe and improve our safety and security practices. So some exciting announcements. The girls varsity swimming and diving team headed to Rochester for states the Friday and Saturday before last. They had a really strong showing. Congratulations to the team and Katie Knopka. And last evening, on a state informational note, the Rockefeller Institute released the highly anticipated foundation aid study, all 314 pages of it, that was commissioned by the governor and the state legislature last spring. Foundation aid is the source for New York State funding in our annual budget. We typically receive just below $2 million in foundation aid out of our $110 million budget this year. While I've not completely read all 314 pages, there are some hints of potential changes in the executive summary and in the early chapters that I've had a chance to read. It is important to note that the report is essentially is a set of recommendations that were put together after a series of hearings and survey feedback that was gathered across the state. No decisions have been made, and we'll have to wait and see what the governor and the legislature choose to do with the recommendations. One big piece, though, is the Rockefeller Institute talked about phasing of a lot of the changes. So I will certainly be back to the board with more information, and I'm sure we'll be getting a download from West Putt. I know NISBA sent something out earlier today that I'm going to share with the board in my report this week. That's a really, really good debrief, and I imagine NISBA will be getting something out as well, if it hasn't already come.
New York State.
The New York State School Boards.
Set theirs.
Yeah. And finally, this coming Saturday is the 16th edition of the Rye High School Parsons Street Player production of Senior Scenes. If you're not familiar with Senior Scenes, it's a show created and run by Rye High School seniors. They choose the scenes from popular plays and movies, cast the actors, direct rehearsals, and present their work in two shows, Saturday at 2:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. in the Performing Arts Center. And for all of our students, actors, and directors, break a leg. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Great, thank you. Yes, the Rockefeller Institute report is chock full of information, but recommendations, and there's much more to come, and how it may or may not impact us here in Ryan certainly, we know, we'll be well informed as we move forward with that. So, we will now move on to presentation and discussion number one, a facilities report. Dr. Byrne?
Okay, so we are fortunate to have our Director of Facilities, Rob Camigliano, here with us tonight, and he's got an update with Ms. Pericchio on some of the work that's happened this past summer and what's ongoing. Thank you, Rob.
Terrific, thanks for having me, giving me the opportunity to provide this update that we've all been working on. So as always, it's guided by the Rye commitment and creating these facilities and an environment that's conducive to learning and everyone's pursuit of excellence.
Oops, excuse me.
So there are two parallel paths, the capital work and all the planning that happens in advance of the summer. You can see the shortlist here. It was the Performing Arts Center, we're calling it Act One. We had to break it in two phases, so we did as much as we could this summer, which included lighting replacements, fully scaffolding it, and painting the theater in advance of this coming summer, which is going to include all the replacement of the seating and some of the ADA compliance issues that is going to update the theater. The high school iLab and the media center, they're right across the hall, so it was tackled as one major project, and the vast majority was done in the summer, but leading up to it, we did some preparation work, which included some abatement, taking advantage of that closed time to allow us to reoccupy it at the beginning of the school year. There's still some elements that we knew were not going to be complete, just for the lead time and how much work you can realistically complete, but we are happy that we were able to deliver that, and we're going to complete that in December. So we've been planning for weeks to take advantage of that, two full weeks that were gone, so fortunately, we're only close for three days out of those two weeks, so we could actually complete a lot of work. So there's a crew coming from Chicago with installers to complete the shelving and the furniture. So this past summer, if anyone has driven by Midland and Osborne, you can see that those trailers are no longer there. Again, that was something that, there's still a lot of planning that was happening, but the demolition permit was available to us, and we thought it was really safe and smart to take advantages out of time and do it without disrupting the school schedule. So in addition to that, we do have the ability to tackle other projects through our transfer to capital fund, and here's the list of what we were able to do. The Salto locks, which are the card access locks, were completed at the high school, which was the biggest challenge and the last of our schools, and that was done really down to the wire. We were doing locks on, right after Labor Day, programming them and running around with the IT team to make sure that they were all opening and closing, and we had full access. So the, moving on the list here, there was a curtain wall that was, it was done in conjunction with the capital work, so when we opened it up, we realized now is the most, it was not only necessary, but it really was the most practical time to do it, and we were able to handle that during the summer construction.
And I can just add, so the window wall was not included in the capital project because during the time that we were developing where we were going with the bond projects, we hadn't identified the space where the iLab was going to go. That's why it wasn't included in the overall scope of what we were creating as far as a high school iLab. However, once we landed on that space, we then realized that the window wall needed to be completed as well, because we would hate to have done a beautiful construction project in a space where we had a failing window wall. So that's why that then was sponsored and funded using the transfer to capital for this year.
So during the summer, the IT team, along with facilities and a group of outside contractors, as they were rewiring the building, we created certain spaces, which also needed HVAC to cool the equipment. That was a major achievement this summer as well. And the wrestling room was fully, we removed all the wall padding, the mats, excuse me, the mats on the floor, and we were looking at the HVAC system, realized if we're investing this time and energy into the, thank you, into this room, it really was a time to upgrade those systems as well. And I'll follow up on some of these with a few slides, so it gives you a visual of what was done. The high school gym, again, another project that was supported through the budget process. We had to break it up in two phases, and we were able to start from the top down and painted the entire space. There was a foldable partition which was removed. It's a remnant of, you know, prior use of how we used to use buildings. We don't divide, you know, the gym like that anymore. So we took that opportunity, and I think it really, the feedback that I've gotten has been really positive, that, you know, the space is the same, but it's really, you know, light and cleaner, and so we're all happy about that. And the softball field, which is in progress, they were actively working on it for the last probably four weeks now, trying to really push this, trying to push the schedule to get sod down, so the girls softball team could play this spring. So the window is slowly closing, but we're almost there, so we get a couple of warm days, and I think we'll be able to hit that target, which is a relief. And again, looking, when we were planning for the softball field, we realized that, you know, the scope is fairly massive, and we don't want to impact that schedule, so we did a district-wide assessment earlier in the year, and we thought that there's some opportunity at Milton if we needed some backup space for the softball team. So it was not a dimension that was, the bases and the infield were not the dimension that was suitable for the high school team, but with a small adjustment with the same contractor, we looked at the field, and they cut out some of the grass in the infield, and we repositioned a basis, so we actually have a really great swing space with minimal effort. So, and that was done actually a couple of weeks ago, so it could sit, and that'll also be ready for the spring. But here's some of the photos. You can see the theater in the upper left-hand corner. It's hard to appreciate how much was done. I don't have any before and after pictures on this slide, but we had to fully scaffold the auditorium in order to paint it. The chandeliers are all LED fixtures with a retracting winch system, so future maintenance, cleaning it, bulb changes can be done safely from the ground, so we don't have to make that a big production just for a light bulb, as well as the curtains on the wall that are there. So we were able to coordinate the different trades and jump on the scaffold that was already set up and save some of that time, money, and energy from the scaffold being there.
And the stage curtain.
And the stage curtain, so this picture was taken from the stage, but you can't see the curtain, but that old torn red curtain was finally replaced. So, as you saw on a previous slide, this was, we're calling this Act One, there's Act Two, and that is the full replacement of all the seating and some of those changes for accessibility that we're going to create. So moving clockwise, the iLab is in that corner. You can see consistency with some of the other renovated spaces that we did throughout the district, which is great from an attic stock standpoint, but they are beautiful spaces, well-lit, and hopefully really conducive to learning. The window wall that Gabby was describing is in the upper right-hand corner. So the two photos next to each other, that would be the vantage point from the inside as well as the outside. So originally, it was not slated to be replaced, but as you open it up and you saw some of the conditions and the corroded connections between the masonry and the steel, it really was time, so we're happy to get that done. The gym in the lower right-hand corner, that's, we were final punch listing, you still see some drop cloths, that was the, probably around August 13th, right before the volleyball team was coming into practice, we really made it within like 24 hours of our deadline, so, and we're happy to, we're happy to get the banners back up and return the gym, so. And the wrestling room, which was just a couple of weeks ago, again, we're trying to do a lot of work when we have the opportunity to get into these spaces, so the wrestling season started a little later in the year, so we're able to kind of pick away at the work, and the mat, the wall padding went in, lighting, paint, and there was a roof curb that we craned over the roof, and we did that, the one school closing that we had that our staff was working for, DiWali. So we got, hopefully, all the dirty, messy stuff done, and then we'll be able to revisit whatever is remaining for that wrestling room. And here is the library, the bookless library, that was right before we rolled our temporary shelves back in. See, you get a real sense of the space if you walk through there. It wasn't an expansion of the space, but it certainly feels like a much bigger room. I think some of the work we did there was pretty extensive. There was the pit and the motorized lift and the staircases in order to access that. Eliminating that was just square footage that was able to be, which becomes usable, square footage for the space, as well as making it accessible for everyone without having those mechanical interventions, so. So the planning is continuing and ongoing until we get to the end of the capital project here, and that is the completion of the additions at Midland and Osborne, that is ongoing. There's been walkthroughs and final planning, and with an occupancy for September of 2025 is our goal, so. And the remaining components of the pack is what I already described, and that's going to leave us the last element of the capital project. Once everything is done and completed, we're going to maximize the remaining capital fund there and complete portions of the art and engineering wing of the high school and middle school. So alongside that are the projects that are able to be funded by the transfer to capital, and those are, we're in the middle of planning some of those projects now, and, you know, we're looking to maximize whatever we can, and it's always done in conjunction with, you know, prioritizing health and safety, any building needs or accessibility issues, and, you know, that's ongoing, so, and hopefully that'll continue, because that really is a great tool that we have to handle, you know, emerging issues, so. And that'll come as a result of meeting with our facilities committee and whatever, you know, surprises come along our way from now until then, so.
And if I can just add here, from the financial standpoint, so the first bullet here is talking about determining the amount available in the '25-'26 budget, as budget development is actually happening right now. The other side of that coin, if you will, is our debt service obligations. So we were fortunate with the '24-'25 budget that we were able to infuse a substantial amount of money in transfer to capital as part of this budget round. The strategy behind that was understanding that the debt service obligations related to the capital projects, as that funding is now having to be paid back because we've expended it, we have the opportunity to use the funds that are in transfer to capital and to reallocate them toward debt service to help us in those years to smooth out the burden on the taxpayer. As those debt obligations increase, we can decrease transfer to capital. So it's very dependent on what our debt obligations are from year to year, as to what money would be available to put toward transfer to capital.
And again, as I mentioned earlier, working with our athletic director, Susan Delay, we were able to look at all of our fields and come up with a priority rating for what we need to address. And here's a list of all our spaces, and some of which have been completed, some are ongoing, and some are on the planning for future scope. You can see the stadium's done in 2020. Again, at some point, that's going to come back up as, you know, needing its routine maintenance, so we're keeping them all on the radar because everything has a life cycle, and we're, you know, we're looking to maximize the useful life of all our investments here, so it's just a continuous cycle. And that's it, that's all I have for my update.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the board?
I had a few.
Yeah?
Questions. Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you for the pictures. It's amazing to see how those spaces have transformed, and even better when you're there in person, but it's nice to see the pictures.
Always available for tour, so.
Oh, good. So just to clarify about the next phase slide, about the timing, I know you said the portables, or not portables, those are gone, the additions to Midland and Osborne, you're hoping occupancy of September, and that's because we're doing, can you just explain a little bit, because we're building those off-site. I think the community might not realize that that will be, are you anticipating installing those in the summer, so that, because that seems like a tight timeframe, but that's because we're actually.
The building's going to roll up, yeah.
Yes, yes. Could you just kind of explain that a little bit?
Sure, so where the basis of design is modular construction, and we explored that route after, actually, after going through a round of stick-built onsite construction, we determined that would actually have the least impact for the school schedule. It did require a complete resubmission to state ed, and we had to, you know, subject ourselves to that timeline, so that extended the project, but it also gave us opportunity to relook at how we're tackling the project, and I think we landed in a really good spot with the construction method. So there's, it's a lot of hurry-up-and-wait, so we're in the, there's, but the planning and the behind-the-scenes has been continuous throughout. So there's a bid on the street right now, vendors walked through last Tuesday, we had another walk-through today, and everyone's finalizing their bid, and we expect to get bids back around the Christmas holiday, would have been opening, I believe, January 6th, so we'll know for sure who our contractor is, and the planning and the putting dates on a schedule will happen shortly after that. So that'll be winter, we anticipate digging a hole in a foundation as soon as the weather allows, which would be, you know, early spring, and the summertime is when it would be an army of cranes coming in, so it really can't be done during the school year, and they're going to be placed and bolted together onsite, and all those final connections are happening in the field, which is why we're able to do a really condensed construction schedule, which would not be with onsite construction. So we're, that's why it's still, even though there's no activity there, there's a lot of activity that's happening. So normally, all the trucks that you would see and the tradespeople that would be onsite, that's going to be in a factory somewhere in the Midwest, so that's.
Great, right, because the idea is that when the modular arrives, it is not just a shell, but the inside of the shell is completed, so the.
Plumbing, the electrical.
Right.
Yeah, it's all included.
Yeah.
So it's the least amount of disruption here, but the biggest bang for your buck if you, in terms of calendar, because once they arrive, short of the connections, it's ready to go.
Great.
Amazing. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much for that explanation. One other question about athletic facilities?
Thank you.
I know I've asked this before, but could you just explain, I think, how, I don't know if it's Gabby, Rob, Susan, how you come up with the priorities of the one through four, and I think it has to do with, you know, most students affected and worse conditions, but could you just give us a quick rundown?
Sure.
And then just, and what Osborne Field, could you just explain what that means?
Sure, so we had come here, we had come to the board in June and did a presentation because we took a deep dive and started looking at our athletic facilities to identify and figure out where do we need to go in terms of improvements next. And having said that, what we did was, obviously, health and safety was priority. We also looked at how many students would be benefited by the field or the play space that we were looking at, so trying to, again, hit as many individuals as possible when we were thinking about these spaces that could benefit from the improvements, which is how we obviously did Nugent Stadium, and we looked at the gym, so on and so forth, the wrestling room, because it was also the level of disrepair to a lot of these spaces, balancing out all of those different needs, which put us at the softball field, which is what we're taking care of now. So we actually also this fall met with Rye Rec to try to understand the utilization of our spaces across the community, not just the school community, because we are fortunate that we do have a strong relationship with Rye Rec, and we have the opportunity to use spaces that we wouldn't otherwise have if they didn't support those programs as well. So baseball for our boys, tennis courts, so on and so forth. So making sure that we were hitting all of the different interested parties. A development did come up, because the last time we were here, actually, our next priority would have been the upper field here at the high school. However, we do have an opportunity, we're in the early stages of planning, but there are some community members that have come forward and have interest in assisting us with updating the Osborne field from the Little League perspective, which then kind of offered us the opportunity to take a second look at Osborne, and if this were to come to fruition, I'm always about thinking, how do we make this better, right? Like, so if we have this opportunity to update the Little League diamond, I'm not really good with terms.
The baseball field.
Thank you. Thinking about repositioning it so that it creates an opportunity for another playing field at Osborne, that would then open up all other possibilities of being able to shift teams that often sometimes just, we don't have enough playing at Nugent Stadium, could then shift over to Osborne. But again, we're in the beginning stages of that, so we are taking a hard look at making sure that we're strategically going to the next best place, that we could offer the most to our community overall. Having said all of that, we're also, as we're building the budget for next year, and we talked about this the last time we were here, is ensuring that there's funds available to maintain these athletic fields and facilities as we rehab them to, you know, maintain that level of playing.
Playability.
That we expect, thank you. Does that?
Yes, that's a great answer.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, so it sounds like it came from the baseball field, maybe some interested community members, and then, like you said, if we're going to look at that, maybe we should, because we've talked about how the baseball field encroaches into the soccer field.
Correct.
And so that's actually quite dangerous.
So you don't.
Because on the sideline, it's dirt for part of it. So if you're going to start looking at that, let's look at the soccer field and where that's placed, and then.
Right, so it's not the greatest soccer experience right now, and it's not the greatest Little League experience, so if we do a little bit of reconfiguring, we think that we can actually create two different spaces there that would benefit everybody.
Great. Great. Thank you.
Two things. One, just a note on, and we can talk about it offline, too. For the baseball, if you do, consider doing it with adjustable base sizes. There's a dearth of 50, 70 dimension fields, which I don't know if they would work at Osborne, but if you're going to redo it, it'd be worthwhile to do it in a way that you can set different sizes on it, which I think is actually really simple if you plan ahead.
I'm going to leave that to him.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. So we're, we never approach it just with a replacement in kind. So unfortunately, that extends the playing, it extends the planning time sometimes, but it really is the right approach that, you know, that we feel that we're tasked with. And it, one of those, it's exactly what you said. It's as simple as you think. It's a concrete base in a, at different dimensions. So we actually had that on the softball field because there was an adult league that had different dimensions. So part of our planning would just reach out to other stakeholders, who uses it? Is this the best spot? Is it the best orientation? And when we asked all those questions to our engineer, you know, we kind of picked his brain for free on, you know, when he was working on the softball field, he took a quick look. George, please don't tell us for that. He, he did say if we oriented, the setting sun is actually out of the batter's eyes and it would be benefit, you know, beneficial as well as getting that width so we could get a practice girls' field hockey field lined in there. So if there's overlap at the high school upper field, we just have another opportunity. So all those things, you know, when we all put our brains together, you know, with the athletic director, we all bring something to the table and we come up with, you know, a different approach. So, and the city of Rye, too. So they have, they have some ideas in how they use it that we're not even aware of.
Great insight, yeah. It was a great meeting to partner with.
And that was my other question. When it comes to, you know, so for some of the youth sports that are around that are then doing fields that are playing on both RYREC fields and school fields, like how does that get sorted? Does RYREC do the assignments and you've given RYREC the ability to assign the school fields? Or do they deal with both separate or how does that?
So Erin and Susan actually do a great job. So Erin is Susan's counterpart, if you will, from the RYREC side. So they do a great job of coordinating all of that to make sure that, you know, the community at large is really getting the access that they need.
But ultimately, the coordination for all those groups goes through RYREC and RYREC works directly with us.
Yeah, because I mean, I didn't really think about it, but there's some of the fields where it's like, sometimes we're on RYREC fields, sometimes we're on school fields, but like, we're always dealing with RYREC, so.
Yep.
Cool.
And then I had one last question. So for the Milton Field, the refresh that we were able to do for this year, is there more work that we were expecting to do there? Or was it just that it happened to fit nicely with what was happening?
So it definitely was happening because similar to how we were able to attack Midland when we were doing the turf.
Right.
It made logical sense because we had already been deployed to also go over there. And it really is like the belts and suspenders of, we had no control over what the weather was going to do while we were rehabbing this softball field over here. So it's just another swing space for our girls to be able to have access to come spring if rain isn't cooperating and we need to delay getting on this field.
But size-wise, the only thing you could really use the Milton field for would be softball.
Yes.
It doesn't have enough space for soccer or anything, so this would have been the work.
Right.
Other than maybe some leveling of the main field periodically, but, but that's part of the, that we're including in the budget, the regular maintenance, the professional level maintenance for the athletic facilities. But it's the softball field at Milton.
Right, but it just also makes sense because if you're looking at the prioritization here, that was a five. And so that's where the.
Correct.
When you're thinking about all the different elements to go into this, it's not just a one-for-one, like.
No.
Right.
One-size-fits-all for how you determine it.
Correct.
So that's why I wanted to.
Yeah, and similarly with Osborne, like, an opportunity has come to us, so we are relooking at the to-do list to say, how can we maximize this?
Right.
And there were some, like, we were able to reuse some of the clay.
Right.
From the softball field that made it advantageous for the improvements at Milton.
Yeah, that's actually a good point. The clay type working with the city, there's, they want to keep it consistent, so we actually had to change the clay type. So as they were hauling it out, the contractor said, I have to dispose of this. And that's when the light bulb went off, like, oh, we have a great reuse for that, so why don't we just cut the infield a little bit bigger? And, you know, so, you know, there was some labor and some laser grating, but it was a great, you know, use of resources that we had, so.
Rob consistently has some amazing light bulbs go off over the years.
I know, and I feel like I've been hearing about them for a long time and that's why getting these updates is so fantastic. And we get to hear some of the nuance that you don't necessarily see just from going to the site and seeing what the work is that was completed. You get to also then see where the, where the strategy comes in. And so I appreciate all of that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, all of this is amazing work and should be applauded appropriately. But I do think the standout is this idea of being able to take a field that wasn't a high priority and all of a sudden be able to target it in a way that's strategic and is now gaining many names across the community. And it is because of that strategic nature of the development of the plan that there has been so many benefits along the way since the beginning of the bond, where it's, okay, how are we thinking about things to make sure that things are actually fitting together? And where can we get a little win and get a little? And we have been the beneficiaries of that. And that is not by accident. It is by well-thought-out, designed plans and conversations and meetings. And we are really grateful for that because we've gotten a lot of great things out of this that we didn't necessarily think we were going to. And we continue to get things that are of great benefit because of that long-term strategic thinking. And thank you very, very much.
Thank you for the summary, Jane. But I did want to just, one last question for the Midland project. I guess once the modular pieces arrive and all the cranes and everything, I guess, I know you had highlighted maybe where that playground is going to be in the back corner, but will that, that space where the road is currently, will that be, you know, sort of grass or something of the like? Is that part of the plan? Will that, or is that, I guess, what would that look like? And will it be in September?
There might be some site work that still remains in September. The, we're going to hyper-focus on getting the building functional and safe and usable, you know. So there might be some site work to be done. The final plan, that's a fire access road, so it has to have the bearing capacity for a fire truck. That's well-defined in the plans. There is a grass crete that is scheduled for there, so it's like a hollow block. So from a distance, it'll all look like grass, but that has to be continually maintained fire access road. So even, even in the winter, if there's going to be snow, we have to plow that. But the intention is to have it grass, but the whole design kept in mind maintenance access. So there's going to be access around the building to get to the playground, so when we have to maintain or do repairs or, you know, patching in the back of the building, you could get vehicles behind there. But yes, the front of the building will have, there will be some roof drainage that is handled through a rain garden in the southeast corner. Fire access road, which, in a similar spot to where it is. So one of the things we did when we did the demolition is prepare the roadbed for that future fire access road. So it made the demolition and all that equipment and the trucks coming in and out not, you know, not destroy that, but it would lay the groundwork for what is eventually going to be there. And even though there's some additional components, we, again, tapping into that, well, while you're doing that, do a little bit more and then we'll have something that's going to be usable. So, I'm assuming you're referencing the big rock path there?
Right, yes.
Yeah, so that's a little advanced thinking, so.
Great. Great. Anybody else? Anything else? Well, again, thank you so very much. We are greatly appreciative of this and we look forward to Act Two and the second half and the modulars arriving. It's going to be a big, exciting summer around here. So we look forward, as we always do, to your fall update. All right. Thank you very much. And now we will, as soon as I get back to my agenda, we will move on to hearing of the public on non-agenda items. We welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. I'm going to ask our district clerk to set a timer for three minutes, so if you hear the timer, please wrap it up. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. So please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may always submit written comments at any time to the board by sending those to rcsdboard@ryeschools.org.
Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Carter Bissou. My address is.
We do, we should state it to get my. It just needs to be the public record that way.
Okay. Can you hear me? Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Carter Bissou. My address is 56 Linden Street in Rye. And I'm a Midland mom and happy PTO member. Was that everything you needed? Yes. Okay. Thank you. I'm here to talk about lice. You'll probably notice as I'm talking, you'll have the inclination to touch your head. That's a side effect of the topic. But in regards to lice plus schools, we are asking for an increase in communication. It's what the families want. It's what comparable schools are doing. And it's a fair, common sense approach to a common problem. The priorities, this is about as professional as I get these days, the priorities as set forth by the district, found on the district website are, as I'm sure you are or are not familiar, are a decrease in absenteeism, a support of families in their efforts to control and eliminate lice. That's the second goal of the district. The third goal is to maintain student privacy. These are admirable and they're very rye and lovely and we want nothing more than to support and enhance these previously established goals. So we're not asking to change that. We want to work within that and like really make that happen. Currently, how is lice handled here? Basically, it's up to the parents. There's information on the website. In today's world, this information can be found everywhere, from the neighbor to Google to ChatGPT. Treatment is one thing and that's not a goal that the school has or should have. Again, we're just sticking with what we have here. But the school's goals, number two, the efforts to control and eliminate lice is noble and achievable. One step of controlling lice, again, you know, our goal, is the crucial step of communication. Communication leads to early detection. Early detection leads to fewer cases of lice. It's a winning combo. It's great. When the school doesn't aid in this, it's incumbent upon the parents to communicate cases of lice in their family. As parents need to communicate amongst themselves with dealing with lice, like, hi, my daughter has lice, they just hung out yesterday, hi, my daughter sits next to your daughter, she has lice, we're sacrificing privacy. So the goal of maintaining student privacy is forfeited. So since there's no privacy, because parents are having to take it incumbent upon themselves to share, to be good citizens, good parents, good school members, to share whenever they are experiencing lice. And also with this, there is no support, back to number two, there's no support in efforts to control or eliminate lice from the school. So I feel that with the current protocol, we're failing on those two of the three fronts. And lastly, there's no real count of lice being monitored. It's kind of like a black hole. You let the school nurse, the principal, the teacher know and it's like, thanks, period. So how would the school know if there's an outbreak if the parents are more or less encouraged to handle this privately as there's no directive to check in with the school? And rather, when families do let the school know, it just is a dead end. So this leads us to, where is the line drawn? Where's the difference between lice versus the flu? Why not notify as well for the flu? The flu, among many other illnesses, resolves on its own with proper care and doctor consultations. Many viruses such as the flu announce themselves with clear symptoms, fever, tummy aches, et cetera. Lice is different. It does not self-resolve or run its course. It does not announce itself early on before a real infestation takes hold. And anyone who's dealt with head lice can speak to the impact at home, that it's not just an inconvenience, but it's also a monetary hit. So what we're putting on a lot of families is a lot of strain. We've spoken directly with families that this has been a financial burden that they were having trouble shouldering and with no support from the schools. It's a time drain and not in small proportions. Imagine you have two working parents and then you're coming home and now you're combing out your kid's hair for hours and doing all the protocol around the house. It's a real deal. And you can get it more than once. There's no immunity. So you get it, you get rid of it, and it can come right back to you, especially if it's just being spread amongst friends. According to the CDC, and I would like to highlight that this was given to me by the New York State Department of Education, when I spoke to the State Department of Education, they forwarded this CDC link, which states, people with head lice may not have symptoms. It may take four to six weeks for itching to appear the first time a person has head lice. As well as the fact that adult female head lice can lay about six eggs each day. So that's that, six eggs. Every single little guy in there is laying six eggs a day. Therefore, it is important to share information with fellow classmates' families to prevent further spread. Back to what the State Department of Education sent me, quoting the CDC directly from the State Department of Education, the most common way to get head lice is by head-to-head contact. This contact can be common among children playing at places like school. Straight from the State Department of Education. We did a survey at Midland, asking if you would like to do an opt-in lice check. And out of 61 responses, 60 said yes, that's 98%. So families are interested in resolving this issue. We asked specifically about a lice check, but this is obviously something that families would like addressed more than it is being addressed now. Going forward, we don't want this to be a complaint. We would love this to be more of a conversation, not a one-way ask, because there's so many solutions to this. Like there's, since we're doing nothing, there's so much we can do. There's so much improvement that can be made. And it, I think right now, having a closed-eye approach, like we don't see anything, we don't hear anything, isn't serving the students. And again, there is no right way, but I think this is evolving road. And the PTO, if allowed, would love to be helpful to the districts, the students, the families in any way possible. And privacy can definitely be respected with this. A lot of parents are forthcoming and there's many ways you can communicate, lice was reported in the second grade, for example. We also spoke with comparable school districts and have brainstormed varying solutions. And I would be happy to be part of any conversation as to what could we do here?
Carter, if I could, you're over time, so if you could just start to wrap it up, that would be great.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Bronxville notifies the class when lice is reported via email. When they return to school, they do a screening. If nits are found, they send them home. For example, they have a fifth grade field trip to Philadelphia every year and they screen the entire grade two days before the trip happens. In Chappaqua, the school principal uses parent square to send out notifications at 6:00 PM at night when they have an increased report of head lice. Harrison, if they have four or five cases in a classroom, they send it, notice to the entire grade. Ryneck, a letter sent home. So basically, we have really great minds here and people with hearts in the right spot. And I know we can find a way. spot, and I know we can find a way that serves our goal in a truer way, whether it's through the PTO, working with forthcoming parents in an anonymous fashion or not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other speakers? Anyone else? No? Okay. Thank you. One point of clarification that I did just want to make, Carter, is that the PTOs have a direct line and communication with the superintendent. So I would certainly encourage that if the PTOs are looking to get involved and are feeling as if that's not happening, that they're, they have a monthly standing meeting with the superintendent, and they should certainly take that up with them. I think you've brought up a lot of interesting points, and as I say in the opening statement, this is not an opportunity to have a conversation. And so what I would just suggest is perhaps we can take a reflection on the comments that were shared this evening, look at our policy and regulation, and come back to the December 17th Board of Education meeting and have a presentation and discussion number two, which looks at our existing regulations, because there are things that are in our regulations that perhaps are not necessarily, haven't been said out loud in a while, that might be able to help. And so for us to look at our regulations, to have a conversation about practices as they are actually happening in the buildings, and even a historical contextual understanding about how we got to this policy.
We can do that.
Okay.
We will be prepared for that.
Anything else that the board thinks we should include in that reflection conversation at our next meeting? Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, we will now move on to our consent agenda. Can I please have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda? Sean Clapper, seconded by Valerie Lapham. Let's take a look at this evening's consent agenda. Consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal. Consent agenda professional appointments. Consent agenda classified appointments. Consent agenda pupil personnel services. And nothing else on the consent agenda. So, all those in favor of this evening's consent agenda? Seven to nothing? So the consent agenda is so moved. So on this evening's consent agenda, we do have a resolution for the Board of Education to appoint the firm of Hazard, Young, and Atia, H Y A, to provide consultant services in connection with the search for the superintendent of schools for the Rye City School District. So this will be the first step in our process in which we will work with the consultants of H Y A. As noted in their RFP, H Y A is a national firm with local connections and experience. The Rye City Schools worked with H Y A in 2016, which led to our successful hire of Dr. Eric Byrne, and we look forward to having that high level of success again. With the assistance from H Y A, community input will be key in identifying the skills that we expect and need for our next leader of the Rye City Schools. There will be focus groups and surveys available to folks in all areas of our community, and we, the board, hope everyone participates in any way they can. This work is of the highest importance, and we are committed to doing this work on the behalf of all of our students in the district. We also, on this evening's consent agenda, accepted a gift from the Rye Garnets Ice Hockey Group in the amount of $30,577.50, which is to support the boys' ice hockey rank expenses. And I do understand that because we have our female ice hockey team in a few weeks, once they're aware of what their expenses are, we will see something coming forward for them as well.
Yes.
We're looking forward to a great season for both our boys and girls. We have a gift from the Milton PTO for $3,200 to support an author visit, which is a great way to extend our in-class learning for our students. It is hard to believe, but we have an agreement with the Wainwright House for the summer. We will have our summer retreat for the board, and so thankfully, we are able to partner with a great community asset like the Wainwright House to be able to host us for our upcoming summer retreat. We also have approval of a contract with Canva, which is making them an approved vendor for the district. You may notice that we have lots of great graphics and slides and presentations, and a lot of that is with the use of Canva. And so we are happy to be able to have that opportunity to continue that work in our communication and commitment to engaging our families and our community in information sharing. We have a number of contracts for special education, students with our neighboring districts as we work to ensure high-quality, appropriate education for all of our students. So that sums up tonight's consent agenda. So we will now move on. Holy cow, nothing from policy. Look at that. All right, well, we're just going to go right to communications to and from the board then. So there's a curriculum council meeting that happened on the 20th. Love to get an update. Spoil.
So I'll ask Matt if he wants to jump in at any point. We both attended on November 20th. It was essentially an update on the sixth-grade electives that had been shifted a bit for this year from last year, and we heard a lot of wonderful information about these, the four different elements for these electives. So it's Skills for Success, Art, Passion Projects, and Words Matter. And then within the Skills for Success, we talked a lot about the executive functioning piece of that, which I thought was quite interesting, because it was great how the administration and the different building administrators were working together to try and help kids who maybe were already struggling a little bit with executive functioning to have that at the beginning of the year and not have to wait till the end of the year, because it's broken up by, you know, each kid takes a different elective each quarter. So that, I thought, was just a great little tidbit. And then we also talked a little bit about the DBT Steps A as well, which is another great, we talked, from an SCL standpoint, a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about this as well. Just wonderful skill building for students that they get to experience as they enter into middle school. Did I miss anything else from your perspective?
I don't know, the only other piece that they talked about were the passion projects.
Yes.
And I actually enjoyed the way that they described it, was a, really a stealth research class, where kids don't actually know that they're doing it, but, but really encouraging.
Tricking them into learning, I think was the phrase.
Yeah, maybe that was it.
Parents, isn't there, there are like lots of cookbooks about tricking kids into eating vegetables, right? Same idea. General concepts are the same.
That's true, and the, we had an example brought, which was, I thought was really interesting, how you, one of the students went back and researched and found photos from previous areas of Rye and buildings and places, and then matched them up with the current, what it currently looks like. And it was, it was fascinating to sort of see how things have changed and what used to exist before. So, I'm glad you brought that up. I forgot. So that's it.
Great. I know that that's been an area of study, those electives in sixth grade, and so it seems like maybe it's really getting a hook into all the right things, which is very exciting, part of that strategic thinking that we always talk about. Okay, so our next meeting, oh, well, first, are there any other communications to or from the board? Any other committees? We have a policy committee coming up? And that's it? Okay. So we have our December 17th meeting. Now we have our SCL for secondary. I guess they heard about the hype and they got a little nervous, so they wanted to wait. All right, well, we will be buried.
They wanted to build up some more hype.
All right, well, I'm all hyped for this.
The anticipation.
I'm ready for it. It's going to be my holiday gift, right? I love it. All right, well, that's wonderful. Any other comments, questions? No? All right, that sounds great. So can I have a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting? Tom Stein, seconded by Matt Shivanoff. All those in favor? That's seven to nothing. Thank you all for joining us.